Welcome everyone to this regular meeting of the Central Berkshire Regional School Committee. We're now under order at 7:04 PM on June 28, 2018. Please note that this meeting is being both audio and video recorded. At this time all who are able please stand for the flag. Thank you, and the superintendent please take the floor.
Dr. Craftreese?
Here.
Ms. Teach Masso?
Here.
Mr. Farley, Mr. Kazillo. Mr. Hagmeyer's not here, Mr. Hopper?
Here.
Mrs. Keith's not here, Mr. Lottetell?
Here.
Mrs. Landisor?
Here.
Mr. West?
Here.
Mr. Peters is not here, Mrs. Tucker is not here, Mr. Wager?
Here.
Mr. Awerwest?
Here.
Mr. Bartels is not here, our CBA rep is not here. Our student rep?
Here.
Excellent. And we have an open seat in Washington, we have a forum.
Okay, it seems appropriate that, to let the committee know, I just received an email from the town of Covington. Member Patricia Keith wrote to the Covington Select Board and forwarded to me, "Please accept my resignation from the Central Berkshire Regional School Committee effective immediately." So we now have an open seat in Covington, which we can afterwards advertise that seat is up for election this November. And the Chair validates that this agenda is compliant with open meeting law, and this time accept responses from the audience. Seeing none, Student Affairs is pro.
I actually do have students. I wasn't sure if I was in school somewhere, but on June 15th we won top championships. While we didn't win, it was still a good season, so we're very happy for them. And then from June 16th to the 22nd, six of our junior's attended Girl State and Boy State, which was held at Stonehill College. And during that week, students learned about government and politics through mock elections and guest theaters and other interactive activities. And my friend went and she really enjoyed it, so that was good. And then yesterday on June 27th, the Berkshire Eagle honored Berkshire County's top high school athletes and coaches, and we had honorities of golf, football, volleyball, swim, and even high trap.
Great, thank you. Enjoy your summer. Okay, well remember please make a motion to accept the minutes of the meeting of June 14, 2018.
Move to accept the minutes of the regular meeting of June 14, 2018.
Give me a motion and a second to approve the minutes of the meeting of June 14. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions? Motion carries. Now, if there are a member who can dispense with the warrants.
Move to approve warrant number 2018 dash 47 dated June 29, 2018, counts payable in the amount of $457,891.19.
Give me a motion and a second to approve warrant number 2018 dash 47. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Extensions?
Stay.
One extension, the motion carries.
Move to approve warrant number PR 2018 dash 51 dated June 28, 2018, payroll in the amount of $740,548.51.
Give me a motion and a second to approve warrant number PR dash 2018 dash 51. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Extensions?
Stay.
One extension, the motion carries.
I'm going to correct the warrant number that's listed on this sheet that we got. Warrant number P... Move to approve warrant number PR 2018 dash 51 D dated June 28, 2018, counts payable in the amount of $153,799.79.
Give me a motion and a second to approve warrant number PR 2018 dash 51 Delta. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Extensions?
Stay.
One extension, the motion carries.
Move to approve warrant number PR 2018 dash 52 dated June 29, 2018, payroll in the amount of $475,216.29.
Give me a motion and a second to approve warrant number PR dash 2018 dash 52. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Extensions?
Stay.
One extension, the motion carries.
Move to approve warrant number PR 2018 dash 52 D Delta dated June 29, 2018, counts payable in the amount of $247,924.52.
Give me a motion and a second to approve warrant number PR 2018 dash 52 Delta. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Extensions?
Stay.
One extension, the motion carries.
That's the end of the warrants.
Okay, thank you. Next on our agenda is category gifts and donations. Will remember please make the motions if they have force.
Be it resolved that the Central Berkshire Regional School Committee accepts the donation of four Yamaha FGX 800C model guitars for the Wakona Music Program from the Bandana Dan Music Scholarship Fund.
Say. Give me a motion and a second to approve a donation to the Wakona Music Program. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Extensions? Motion carries.
Be it resolved that the Central Berkshire Regional School Committee accept the donation of $1,329 to Kittredge Elementary School for the printing of the Kittredge Memorial Book from the Kittredge PTO as recommended by the District Treasurer.
Say. Give me a motion and a second to accept the donation to Kittredge Elementary School. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions? Motion carries.
If that's the end of donations, is...
No, there's two more. Yeah, this is the... Just two more donations.
Be it resolved that the Central Berkshire Regional School Committee accept the following donations to the General Scholarship Fund as recommended by the District Treasurer. $2,000 from the Pittsfield Cooperative Centennial Scholarship Fund, $400 from the Class of 1981, $4,800 from various donors.
Give me a motion and a second for donations to the CPRSD General Scholarship Fund. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Extensions? Motion carries.
Be it resolved that the Central Berkshire Regional School Committee accepts the $1,000 RADAR academic return on investment project curriculum grant from the District Management Group as recommended by the District Treasurer.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to accept the donation, RADAR grant. Is there any discussion?
So, if I don't do it full justice, feel free to jump in. So it was actually a competitive grant program through the Department of Ed to look at your allocation of resources and compare them to the impact they're having based on student achievement data. The grant itself actually was much, much larger, but they gave what you may consider consolation prizes to those who didn't receive the grant, and this is what that is. But it did give us some funds, and Leslie and Melissa really spearheaded looking at it. We just had to very narrowly start to use it, but it's actually really, it's quite an interesting program, and it's very, it makes a lot of sense that you'd be looking at when you add something. So what we're looking at, for example, would be our instructional coach. When you add something like that, what is your return on investment?
Is that just something this year, or you think it'll be ongoing maybe next year?
I think it'll be ongoing, and we'll get opportunities, so we'll keep trying to get the larger opportunity eventually.
Okay, so all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Extensions? Motion carries. All right, under report of the Chair this evening, we have a couple of topics. First one is account of Washington School Committee vacancy, which we continue to have, and we now have a Covington, Town of Covington School Committee vacancy. Also to note Covington status, I wanted to, I don't know how many members received this letter from select person Sears. I did.
I got two of them.
You did?
Yeah.
Okay.
So I... I got two.
You got two of these?
Yeah, and they're not the same, I got two, one week apart.
Okay, because this is the only one I got. And I don't know if what it's, if Central Berkshire Regional School District requires supplementary information, OPED year ending June 30, 2014. I don't know what this is for, I don't know what it's intended to convey, there was no other context other than this, provided is that what was mailed.
Yeah, I got that one.
Okay, Mike, I know what you got, and I think that was a couple weeks earlier. But that's all right.
June 4th and June 1st. Sean, I said since the 30 years was highlighted, I think that's what the count is, just to say 30 years from what I...
Well, there was no explanation, no context, no request, so I don't know what to do with it except for take it, and if it comes up at a later date, we'll address it then, but that's the only thing I have for Covington, and I don't know if you want to add anything with Covington.
Well, I think that Mr. Sears has a different way of calculating OPED liability from what really four actuaries have described and what I thought was the official Covington approach that was described to us. And apparently, I would guess that that somehow bolsters KIPs, minority assumption of the way to calculate OPED, but it's incorrect. I mean, it's not helpful with what we've got here, needs a lot more explanation.
All right. It is what it is, and if the matter comes up at a later date, we'll attend to it, but I don't know what to do with it otherwise. Another topic is the school committee election. Note that you have to, if you haven't got your nomination paper working already, but I'm still in the process myself. You got until, I think, July 24th, if I remember correctly, to get it through to your local clerk's office, registrar's office, and then sometime in mid to late August to get it into the central office. So, the only other thing I have is emergency business. I will tell you what it is first. You all received, you all received the email that I sent today about this open meeting law complaint, okay? So we have to choose whether or not we wish to, A, discuss it tonight, or B, have a special meeting in two weeks to discuss it. So I'm going to leave that up to the committee. If you want to, if you want to take care of this tonight, then we just need to vote to accept new business, and we'll talk about it. If you don't, then we'll have to call a meeting for June, sorry, July, July.
Motion to accept new business.
Second. Give me a motion and a second to accept new business. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we accept new business. So here's the matter. I received this today. We have by law 14 business days to respond to it, okay? And this is what we can do. First of all, we have to say whether or not we accept, we accept this as a true violation. If we reject it as a true violation, then there's no remedy, we don't have to fill out or do anything about remedial action. If we say it is a violation, then we will indicate so, and then we have to come up with remedial action. So is that clear to everyone? I'm going to need, I'm going to need one or two votes on this this evening, but I want to give you some background first. So, first of all, I'm going to write or read what I wrote to the committee, because this really started my day off. So this is what I wrote. Dear Committee Members, I just received this today. Presumably this has something to do with statements made at the last school committee meeting. Time permitting, I may review the video. That was before I read everything about it. At this point, I have to say how disgusted and sense and completely disappointed I feel that some members of our community have nothing better to do than try to smear names and efforts of people who put their hearts into a cause for which most of us receive no personal gain except to see the successes of our youth come to fruition. Those who cast such atrocities, such as the accuser, stand small and weak in my mind, as they clearly haven't the courage to do that which we all have chosen as a truly honorable personal sacrifice of our time. I will be perfectly candid that this has been a difficult year, and many of the events we've witnessed have weighed heavily on my mind and have even had detrimental impacts to my health. One being, I'm currently working with pneumonia, working through pneumonia. But this accusation is against my personal and professional integrity, and I feel completely and wholly violated. This will influence my plans for future committee commitments. I will say tonight that three committee members talked me down off the ledge, because I was wanting to read this and walk out. I've had this, I've had it with this stuff going on in our community. I have neither the time or desire to deal with this kind of abuse from a member of our community. I will always remain respectful of the many and varied opinions protected by our Constitution of our committee members and the members of our community, but I will never, ever respect people who seem to thrive on ill-intended, ill-informed, and divisive innuendo. That's my statement. To that end, we had a discussion last time about the superintendent having a 19 percent raise. This is another situation where there's rogue people in the community that have nothing better to do than spread rumors and try to basically defeat the good things that we're doing. So this has me mad, as you can all tell. So with that, I did review the video from our meeting, our last meeting. So all I can gather that is at about 1 hour and 28 minutes plus or minus into the recording, we had a discussion in the context of exit interviews, okay? Mr. Hagmeyer had a lot of words, he and the superintendent were back and forth, encouraging that any information that needs to come forward to the committee from exit interviews should. To my knowledge, we've never had that information in the past, we've never had a pattern of people leaving the district for specific reasons, but in case we do, I think it is appropriate, in my mind, in my opinion, that it is brought forward to the committee, okay? Then there was a discussion where Mr. Lottetell was talking about, I guess discussions that he has with the superintendent, he was referencing that I've had discussions with the superintendent, and we do. If there isn't a single member on this committee that hasn't had a discussion, or a phone call, or email with the superintendent, I would be very surprised, okay? That is our right. The superintendent is not bound to open meeting law, okay? So the person's complaint, that's the first, that's the first false part of it. So she is misinformed about bringing the superintendent in as a group of us conspirators making decisions for the committee, okay? So, a couple of other observations. We also have a policy, which is why I'm crazy with policy tonight. There was another reason, but that reason dissolved. But Policy 1410, no, I work with the superintendent to come forward with the agendas. We have to meet to discuss what the agenda's going to be. We decide what topics come forward on a particular week. We elicit the committee to come forward with topics, okay? Sometimes you do, sometimes you don't. We have standard topics to come along over the course of the year, and we have got a guide for that, that's what we use. So yes, do I talk to the superintendent on a regular basis? I do, okay? We talk about things going on in the district, all right? Not at all that comes forward to the committee. Most of it is the superintendent may wish to have some consultation or counseling, okay, and speak to me if I'm saying something out of line. And that's, this is the way it is, okay? Things that come to the committee that require vote come to the committee and they're voted on, period. You know, I send things out probably too quick sometimes. When we had that issue that came from the MTA and the CBA, I had it out very quickly, all right? So I'm all about transparency, and I really, I'm insulted, insulted that this was even, that anyone even put the time into writing this, because they took what was said out of context. I invite you all to take a look at that. Take a look at that section of the video. Just uncomfortable parts, but you know, this person said that there were deliberations, there were no deliberations. This is deliberation in the committee, okay? There were personal issues. Well, I'll give her the benefit of the doubt that she doesn't know how to spell personnel, if that's what she wrote in that. Okay? But then, the biggest mistake was bringing the superintendent into this mix. Like I said, the superintendent is not bound by open meeting law. Other things, just to remember, the school committee's responsibilities, and I want to get this on the record, we're responsible for budget, we're responsible for policy, we're responsible for employing a superintendent, we're responsible for engaging in collective bargaining, and by the way, we're also responsible for the business administrator. That's it, okay? We don't get involved with hiring of principals. We may be asked to be on a search committee, but we don't make the decision. That's the superintendent's decision. It's the superintendent's decision and the principal's decision about what they do with personnel matters. If there are grievances that come forward, they come forward to personnel, and they come forward to the school committee by way of personnel. We haven't had grievances in a long time. So, I can't make heads or tails out of this. I don't know what purpose would be served by looking for this stuff in our meetings. So, I'm insulted. I do know that this person has had a history of filing open meeting law violations against other government bodies. I Googled that tonight. So, with that, I've already spoken with counsel, and what he is going to need is this committee's response. So I need to know first of all if you agree, if you agree to this violation. All right, so I need, so I want to make a motion that the Central Berkshire Regional School Committee, make up words, I don't want to tell you.
Sean, I think it would be, I think it would be good to have comment from the committee before we move to anything else, so I think it would be good to give everybody an opportunity to say anything that they might want to say.
We can say that during deliberation, but you can say it beforehand. I'm okay with either way. Go ahead and speak your mind before this goes to a vote.
I don't mind going first, seeing how I heard it spoke up. I'll just, I'll just keep it very simple. I, you know, I echo your concerns around this accusation. I think it's frivolous. I think that we do have a policy that addresses this. I think there's misinformation that may have contributed to this. I don't find that it holds water in any way, shape, or form, and just from a personal standpoint, you know, knowing many of you on this committee for some time, I would say that the ethical standard upheld by this committee is exemplary, and in particular yours, Sean.
Thank you.
I'd like to read what I wrote today, and I'm up, did you all get it? Okay, so just to summarize then, I think this is a random person who made a random complaint, and for us to blow it out of proportion and say this is, we should react horribly to this, I think is giving her more weight than she deserves. I understand...
I agree, I'm sorry I did.
No, no, I agree, I was outraged at first, but I don't want to empower her. It's like the bully, and I don't want to empower the bully. I think you three are doing an outstanding job of representing this community, and to be chastised is just ridiculous, and I, I'm appalled.
Okay. Mr. West.
In your presentation, I made a statement that we decide what goes forward to the school committee, whatever that may be, you misunderstood by somebody who called it. I just wanted, you know, just to say that what you're really doing is you are sorting. You sort what goes to the school committee, what stays with the superintendent, what goes where, but all items that are brought to you are addressed.
And it's a matter of timing, too.
Yes, what do you have to write, because it has to be open meeting laws and postings and such, you have to decide what goes where and why.
But there may be some topics that are more appropriate to put off to the next meeting rather than this one, because we have a full agenda and we don't want to overload it, so those decisions are made. It's not preventing any information from coming to the committee.
But it's important that the public knows that everything that comes forward to us is addressed one way or another.
Yes.
Sean, I could.
Yep.
I unfortunately have been out for the last few minutes, so I witnessed the meeting. I tried to look at the video, couldn't get it up, so I haven't seen the video, I don't know. But as Peter said, exemplified, you've done under, you really have. I didn't, in reading it, I didn't take it as an attack on you, I took it as an attack on Dick.
Well, she named all...
You, of course, I understand being head, but...
She named, she named the three of us.
Yeah, I understand, but not specifically in the sense that you were culpable, or you did some action that is that, as he did.
Well, he made a statement.
I mean...
He made a statement.
Yeah, and that's what I'm saying, that's what she was jumping on, not you two. You two were just included because you're part of the management team, you know? And I agree with you, that's all three.
The essence of the statement was talking about people and reasons they want to quit, and maintaining privacy, some of that, and that may not make it to a subcommittee, it may not make it to the committee. It is private information, but I think the superintendent has responsibility to categorize that type of information, to see if there's a pattern, if we have a large attrition, or attrition that seems to be pointed to one school, I'll say, or another, hey?
Well, if I hadn't been there and you were standing all day, I wouldn't have talked me down.
I already had help with that.
All right.
I mean, we put a lot of time into this, and this is a distraction, it's an unnecessary, unneeded distraction, and I just, I want to get past this.
Yeah, well, we...
Personally, I want, I'm not telling you what to do, but I want to get past this, because it had me enraged for the day.
So we make a motion that this is a non-issue, and we do not...
We have to respond.
Well, what was the motion that they replied?
We don't find any credence to this complaint.
Yes, I make a motion that we don't find any credence to it.
And you want to dismiss it?
Yes.
Okay, so what will happen? We got a motion and a second to dismiss the complaint. Is there any discussion?
I just think that there are people in the community, I mean, you're always going to have those that don't trust government bodies and are willing to throw out any kind of complaint that they can think of against those bodies in their conspiracy theories. But the people in the public need to understand that you guys have to assess what agenda items we're going to talk about. So there will be some broad discussion of what will come, as you said, what will come to meetings and when. It has nothing to do with trying to keep things from the public. It's just timing matters and keeping a focus.
Thank you. West.
One problem, I've been on school committee for a quick few years now, and this is one of the best school committees I've ever stood on, everyone fits along so well, and we obey the laws, and do what's right for the kids, and I find this really offensive that this actually come forward and that this...
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Extensions? Motion carries. So what will happen going forward is I will work with Russ, who, right, to come up with a response. I'll share that with the committee, okay? I don't know what to do, if you have any comments to it, but I'll share that with the committee, because we'll write it up and make sure that if Russ is comfortable with it, comfortable with it, I suppose if anyone in great context to it, then we can have the meeting on the 14th, or whatever it is. Okay? Thank you, thank you for your support. Okay, subcommittee reports or recommendations. Dr. Craftreese?
We have not met, but we have some schedules.
Okay, thank you. Plans. Mr. Jones, lower, let me speak to my cell.
We have a document that we have to report.
It's that time of year. Policies, who is going to take over? Mr. Hagmeyer, second reading. Do remember, like, to make the motion for the second reading of Policy 7405.
Be it resolved that the Central Berkshire Regional School Committee approve the second reading revisions to Policy 7405, Students in Arrears on Payment for School Breakfast or Lunch, and as recommended by the Policy Subcommittee.
Say. Do we motion a second to approve the second reading of policy 7405? Is there any discussion?
I read that just recently, because I wasn't familiar with the review the first time. And I thought it was rather lengthy, especially as it came to the point of being arrears. I understand that a student, you truly do not want to be put in an embarrassing situation, but it refers to the parent in several instances, and refers to the fact that you can get special help. You can sign up to get help to pay for the lunch. And I just thought that it was rather broad, that it simply put, it's the parent, the parent, the parent, the parent. Student does not, cannot act in on money. It's a sensitive issue. But the bottom line, are we writing off the parent being handled on the other? There must be something written there that says, okay, the parent has to apply for free lunch. They don't need to apply for paper. You're not going to get it. One of them.
Sure. The reason that the steps are so lengthy is because we want the food service staff to follow certain, a certain progression, and not work through the child, but with the parents. Our point-of-sale system allows us to send emails, and that's new, so we want to start doing that. The food service director will have to contact parents. We do today, and will continue to offer the free reduced packet form. We cannot force them to apply. We recommend they apply. We can look at their finances if they'd like us to and let them know if they're in the range, but a lot of times we don't get that. It'll either go directly, and we don't see it until after the fact, when they complete it and give it to us. The write-off, we have been writing off in the last few years, any unpaid accounts. We can't carry those forward, we have to write them off, and you can't use federal funding. Food service, the lunch program receives federal funds, you can't use that to pay off the bad debt, so to speak. So, you have to use the operating funds, and we do do that each year. We've been doing that.
I'm sorry, did I misread this or did I fall? Does it imply that the debt could be carried forward later next year?
We do write it off at the end of the year, yes. We do.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, just to note that the second reading will adopt a policy.
Yeah, I understand. But eventually, what will happen is if we continue to write off, continuing, continuing, we'll eventually have to raise the prices, because somebody has to pay for that. You know, you can't call up the suppliers and say, "Sorry, nobody paid." You know, so that'll be the eventual, I mean, I can't believe there's that many, but eventually it could add up to that, and then everybody pays, so.
We do, we do receive reimbursements for even paid lunches from the federal government, smaller, but we do receive reimbursements for those. So, the federal government through the state of Massachusetts reimburses for any meals served.
Are we, are we close to the point where, I know in Pittsfield, they don't even charge for most, are we close to that point yet?
Our, it really goes by the, look at the free and reduced percentage, and we hover anywhere between 40 to 47 percent in any of our schools. Pittsfield, I think, is above 60 percent. So, when you hit the 60 percent mark, that's when it is advantageous to do that. But if you're below it, what will happen is the district will be responsible for the difference, which is currently paid lunches, local funding.
Okay. All is in favor of adopting revised policy 7405? Any opposed? Aye. Any opposed? Suspicions? Motion carries. I guess that's it for policy, personnel.
A week ago Monday, I'm sorry, Tuesday, we could go Tuesday, the bargaining team met with the teachers bargaining team, and that was the last scheduled meeting. We did not reach agreement, so we're looking for another date, the next date, and we've given them three dates in the summer, and the summer is a very difficult time to schedule anything. So, I'm not optimistic anything will happen before the end of August, but it's out there. So, that's the status right now. Personnel met a week ago Monday to deal with the evaluation of the superintendent, and what we had in front of us was the check, the spreadsheet that included the evaluations by various criteria, and also the narrative that each of you put together, the 12 members put together. And we had everything in front of us. There wasn't a lot of decision to be made, because we're very consistent. Everybody said about the same thing, and the ranks were pretty consistent. What you have in front of you on pages six and seven is the consolidation of that.
Can I stop? The one thing that I, that the chair has provided in the past is that spreadsheet and also summary of all the comments. I do want to share that with the committee. I was expecting to see it in the pack of this evening. I know you've got the final recommendation, but.
Okay, we haven't done that. I guess we can send that up, an email of, I'll try and do that, so everybody will see everybody else's comments, the same thing that we've always gotten. So, this year was different. We consolidated, and the Personnel Subcommittee put together the words that you see on pages six and seven. So, given that, I will make the following motion. Be it resolved that the Central Berkshire Regional School Committee approved the composite score for the summative evaluation of the superintendent, and assess, and has assessed the superintendent's performance for the 2017-18 school year as proficient as recommended by the Personnel Subcommittee.
Okay, we have a motion and a second for approval of the summative evaluation of the superintendent. Is there any discussion?
So, what you have in front of you is what we're, is a composite, and that's what we're voting on tonight. I will say that we will be meeting with the superintendent probably in late August or September to go over the whole thing with her again, and discuss various points that were raised in the evaluations that were done by 12 of us. That's all I have to say.
Does anybody else have any? Okay, all in favor? Can you give a saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Suspicions? Do the motion carries.
I don't think there's any need for executive session tonight. So, that's, that's the end of my report.
Okay. One thing that I wanted to propose to the committee is setting goals for the superintendent. Often, the superintendent comes to us with the goals. I'd like to encourage the committee to consider goals. One particular goal that I'm recommending is, I think there's an opportunity, that, you know, we've heard a lot about what is happening in Meskis this year, and we know that we're turning over some staff there as we speak. But I think there's an opportunity for the superintendent to work with the staff there and make it a model school. I'd like to shoot for that. We've heard a lot of things about the climate, bullying. I think it's time, I think it's time that we, you know, that the target of the program review, redo, unearth some, some issues in the school. So, I think there's an opportunity, I think there's an opportunity to turn into a hero, if you will, that we turn the school around, and not that it's, certainly not a bad school, it's a good school by any other standards. Every school, every middle school in particular, has those problems. But I think there's an opportunity here to make it a good school. So, that's my recommended goal for next year. Okay, technology?
I'd like to report, we're taking a vacation, and I do want to set up a date for initial meeting in fall, shoot for Monday, September 10th, 6:00. Let's do central office.
Okay, I'll follow, all right?
Yeah.
All right, well, Kona Golding project?
Sure. So, this afternoon, myself and Erin all participated in a conference call with DRA and SCANSKA, because we have received the comments back from the MSBA. They actually call them the draft comments, because there will be continuing dialogue related to the educational plan. Most of the comments, based on DRA and SCANSKA's experience with the MSBA, are fairly typical kinds of comments, primarily just looking for more detail in certain areas, looking for more details around some of the career technical education programming, to ensure there's strong justification for that, not only now, but in the future. Some additional details around the kinds of professional development that might be needed to transition to a very different kind of a facility, which, the nice thing for us is a lot of that professional development is already what we're doing. The building is kind of their, their obstacle. We're not waiting for the, the professional development, though, around things like flexible seating and workshop models of instruction and more project-based learning. The other, the other areas are around really a little bit more definition around what the pods will be used for, so there's not the ropes of classrooms broken up by departments, but instead classrooms are in pods surrounded by learning commons, and just more detail around what that will look like. So, Mr. Rob and I took very detailed notes, and we will go back and forth on them between now and July 11th, when a response is due to MSBA. And they may come back with additional comments after that and continue in the dialogue. If they don't, the comments that we responded to will be put into the actual educational plan, and that will become our educational plan. But at some point, we'll kind of reach an agreement as we work through these comments. There is a working group meeting July 26th, the day of the school committee meeting, and that evening as well, DRA and SCANSKA are coming to school committee to provide an update. So, you'll hear directly from them as to where we're at in the process. The only other thing I have is, at the last meeting, Mrs. Tucker had raised the question of what happened with the model school program, and why is that not being pursued? And I think sometimes it's important, it was a good question, to remember that people who are on the school building committee may not be consistent with those on the school committee, and so making sure you guys have all of that information, because that is something that was decided not to be pursued, but I don't know if this committee was fully briefed on that. So, I'll make sure to do that now. The model school program used to come with incentive points that are no longer, are no longer there through the MSBA. So, it's not as desirable of an option anymore. Some people will still argue that because it's already a design that's been vetted, that there are going to be cost savings, because you already have basic design. But for our purpose, our footprint as approved is smaller than the small model school, so there would have to be adjustments anyways that would likely zero out any cost savings. So, that was part of it. The other part of it is our, our visioning process, our educational planning process did not match the model school. So, what we were saying we looked for in a school based on our visioning didn't match the model school that we visited in Uxbridge. The other factor of it, which is kind of an interesting factor, is that we had two finalists for a design team when we went down to Boston, and one of them decided to withdraw or not bid on our, our project. They are the design team that designed the model school in Uxbridge. So, it, so kind of, it just kind of worked itself out that we were kind of talking about it, and it didn't meet several of our criteria, and that's why we are where we are. But SCANSKA and DRA, and I think SCANSKA, who's probably in more of an objective place around it, would not, would not recommend that for us for several reasons. The footprint, our educational goals, and what our planning process had outlined, as well as the strong working relationship we have with the design team onboard. So, I just want to make sure I answered that fully. I'll send that out as well, because some of the committee members are not here, including the one who raised the question. But that's all I have.
Could I ask you a question?
Oh, yeah.
We're going back to the town meetings, so was there any revelation or anything to do with that? Was there any insight that we hadn't had before?
And I think I would welcome anybody who was there to kind of speak to that as well, based on your perspectives.
I didn't hear any earth-shattering revelations. I heard people really focusing in on the options and what they thought about the options. There was kind of nuts and bolts things, not esoteric things. I think they really liked Plan 2A1, more like 2. Yes.
That one seemed to be the favorite throughout.
Throughout.
To decode that, that means that people were favoring unheeded.
If we do that again, from your perspective, so the question was, I'll say, sparsely intended, okay? And the 5:00 timeframe seemed to conflict with the possibility of people just getting out of work, not being able to make it back to the school. So, futuristically, if we do this again, might we pay the, I don't know.
Yeah, no, I think that's fair. I do think that's absolutely fair, and I shared that with the team that presented that then as well. They were open to that. The only, the one thing I saw that really caught people's attention is the options that they have, they have a timeframe that you'd expect these, these projects to be able to be completed in, and the renovations are up there at 34 months, and the new building is at 18 months. And that's a, that's a big, that the high school career is 34 months, 18 months, is it a year and another summer? So, that was very, that caught people's attention quite a bit. I would say even more so sometimes than the dollar figure, because it was pretty striking, the time differences. But 2A1, which does seem to be coming, coming out, prevailing at the school building committee, there's a, seems to be appealing around a preference towards it, was also the case in the community meetings as well. It's a, it's a new school, and it's got like an enclosed courtyard as part of it that would be a learning space. It's set farther back from the road, where one of them is played close to the road. So, it seemed to be that that was the one people were most interested in. But I did hear a lot of comments on the significant difference between renovation and the time it would, would take versus rebuild, which people may not have been fully aware of. They also had base repair on there, which was nice. So, they had, you know, because what would you have to do if you did nothing? You can't just say, okay, you know, business as usual, there's going to be needs in that building that need to be addressed in the very near future. So, they had the base repair costs, which the communities would be 100 percent responsible for, then they have renovation and rebuild.
That is unveredging that.
Yeah.
So, it was a very clear cut that doing nothing really was a very costly event.
From my perspective, the people that attended were basically older group, and we know we have students, and I don't think there was one student attending there, which was disappointing, because we know that you send them out, messages will out via email, sure. It takes you over. I don't think it's, maybe the next one.
One of the things, two things that I took away from the meeting that I attended, there was a young parent, I don't know if you're speaking, but she had a little toddler with her, and she was from Beckett. She attended the meeting in Pensia, and she was very, you know, she came in with a certain perspective, was pretty vocal about, you know, what she saw, and was very supportive of the children being on the, the one that was in the closed courtyard, because she felt from a safety perspective, 2A had to be an open portion to the field that she didn't think was as safe for the children. The other thing that came out of that meeting that I thought was very interesting was there were representatives from, and I apologize, I'm not, I think they were convinced that were not positive, that were concerned about the impact of the Earthen Dam that is owned by Pittsfield, being, you know, relatively close to the site where the school was going to be built, and, you know, I'm concerned about, you know, what if Pittsfield didn't tear that dam, and, you know, that it could impact the school. So, I hadn't heard that mentioned before, but it was somebody in the finance committee, and one person was an emergency management representative that expressed that concern, and I was thinking, well, when they built the first school in 1961, wasn't the dam there then?
Yes, it was.
Yeah. So, I mean, it's been there for a long time, and I drive by it every day, and we're doing the work of it. So, I'm hoping it's certain.
There was a dam that failed. That has, and if it's the same one, that has failed with no consequences to the school.
Well, there's two, there's two dams. There's, there's the one, there's the Earthen Dam that makes up the west side of the, it's Cleveland Reservoir. I live a mile away from it, nine-tenths of a mile. So, there is the big Earthen Dam, that's where, I forget what the house is that's there, what purposes it serves, but there's the Earthen Dam, there's another spill, spillover dam towards the east end of the reservoir. So, that, that may have been the one that's failed, but that's a.
It failed. It failed, and Dalton now gets its water from Pittsfield because of the failure of that. And prior to that, Dalton water came from Dalton. So...
I thought that was off Route 9.
It might be.
Yeah, I think that was off Route 9. But there were issues during Sandy, I believe, where the football field got flooded. But I mean, that had nothing to do with any of the dams. But I think the one you're talking about was up off of Route 9, and that's where we used to get our water, but now we're getting to get it from Pittsfield.
Okay. Well, rightfully so. People that work in emergency management worry about things like that, so I'm glad they've got our backs.
And they're coming from, G.R.A. is taking the debt on their checklist to check into it, seeing what the impact to it is. We're all in that dam we had, something like that.
I have just a few more comments. So I went...I was able to go to three meetings, and the only meeting I could go to is the one down here. Just some of the themes I heard. First of all, up in Windsor, there were about seven residents in attendance. In Dalton, there were about 20 residents in attendance there. And in Hinsdale, I think it was about the same as Windsor, about eight residents, five to eight. So we're attracting people. I wish we'd attract a lot more, but people only have so much time in their schedules that some of the common things were security, safety and security, expandability, like if we ever need to add to the high school for whatever reason, will we be able to do that? That was addressed. In fact, it's one of the comments in their sheet, their spreadsheet. There was talk about geothermal, solar, which I don't know how serious we are about geothermal, but solar is certainly on our list. Favorable teacher-student ratio with the express desire that we keep that as small as possible. Let's see, there was one thing...one thing I was asked about was, why don't we just move all the students out of Wacona so they can be completely unaffected by any construction? So I kind of did the math on that, and we don't have the room in our other schools to do that. Looking at the Nezdek report from 2014, the current capacity of our buildings, I think we were about 70 or 80 seats shy if we had to, like, move all the Wacona students in Meskis and then displace the Meskis students. Never mind the disruption in the community and the parent revolts that we would have moving a lot of kids around to Kittredge and, you know, Craneville. I don't know...Craneville can't...it doesn't have any more leeway to expand. And this building...this building's about the same as Kittredge. I think Kittredge is...would be a little worse off, there's a little more capacity here, but it's...we can't do that. The room. So that's my...
I'm trying to figure out paying for it.
Yeah, really.
Or who's going to pay for the transportation? We went through that once before. Old Dalton High would be available for four or five months before that's getting torn down. You'd have a really tight frame there.
Okay. That's scary.
If it could affect all the inmates.
Superior Science Report.
Sure. So most is fairly self-explanable. There was quite a few classrooms at Craneville that were highlighted in the Berkshire Eagles, so I did include them for those of you who don't read the Eagle regularly, as well as a very nice comment from Jen Smith, who often covers ongoings of the district in quite a positive way. Two examples, though, I did want to bring to your attention, and I will highlight, of countywide collaboration. I know we've been talking a lot about that, and they're on a smaller scale, but I think that they are kind of moving in that direction. One of them is the 7 to 12 World of Difference peer training program. It also goes to some of the concerns that you've had brought in front of you regarding social-emotional cultures in certain buildings for students and the challenges students face when they are engaging in peer conflict or, you know, the victims of bullying, that kind of thing. So this program's quite different in that it's not only training an adult facilitator, and we were actually able to send two. It's fully funded by the Jewish Federation of the Berkshires, so their cost for their training, as well as their lodging, their transport, everything is covered. And we were able to send...Joanne Dowling will be attending from the middle school, which will be excellent. She'll come back. She'll be able to train a group of students. So this training is both empowering adults, but also students to start to take on some of these roles and to assist their friends, their classmates, who may be targets, and to take action themselves in very developmentally appropriate ways. And then Meg Donovan will be attending from the high school. So it's countywide, it's an evidence-based program, and I think that it looks excellent. Leslie Blake Davis went to the presentation on it and was able to get two of our district staff members in there. So, but it's an example, I think, of countywide collaboration that if we didn't come together as a county, we most likely would not have the funding for it because of the cost around it. The second one is the iBerkshires Project, and I think this is another one that we've already taken advantage of. What it is, is that the superintendent's roundtable, the idea primarily spearheaded by Jake McCandless and Tim Lee, who's just stepped down from the superintendency in Lenox, about how we could be more effective at advertising and recruiting as we're often looking for, you know, we're looking for the same kinds of jobs that are difficult to fill and are looking at a very limited pool. And we often are going to what we call talent ed, which is kind of the...it's the known way of finding a job if you're an educator. But if you're either thinking of becoming an educator or you're not a traditional educator, you might not be as likely to look there. And so what it is, is the iBerkshires Project, it's creating a webpage for major employers in the Berkshires right now. That's how General Dynamics, Williams College, those kinds of places are advertising for jobs. And we will actually have a page on iBerkshires called teachberkshires.org. So what they presented to the committee, the superintendent's roundtables, that they're able to reach people even with what they call like dangling spouses. So my spouse is being relocated, I might be looking for a job as well, and my spouse might be looking for a job at GD. But if a teaching job is on that same website, they might say, "Hey, did you look at this?" We're also able to highlight five key jobs a month, and we, this past month, already had asked for Bill Bell, Bill Bell being the one who's kind of in contact, for the superintendents to highlight the Meskis principal. The second one I'm about to ask him to highlight is the Paul Jacoby, who is our part-time technician, is retiring tomorrow. And that's a less traditional job to fill, looking for a technician to work with Joe and Rick in the technology department. So we're going to highlight that one as well. So I think that's, you know, again, small scale, but I think they could have a positive impact for us. And I'll ask Joanne and Megan Donovan as I'm speaking. Their training, I believe, is in the later part of July that they're going to go. I'll ask them to come in and give you guys an update on that, on what it will look like in the school, because you can read a little bit about it. And I think it could be a real positive for us to add to our anti-bullying curriculum and the programs that we offer for kids. So I'll ask them to come in, if not August, in one of the September meetings to give you some information.
Any questions? There's no personnel changes, no new business, no old business. We already entered into new business. Mark's for the good of the committee. Robert.
Two great events at Craneville this past couple of weeks. One night, they had a community picnic. It was pretty well-attended. Aussies came up with their truck and made hamburgers and hot dogs, for which I saw a bunch of people going through several times. Kids really liked it. Ain't nobody here to tell them no. But, you know, and the parents brought drinks and chips and stuff. It was really nice. The DJ was, you know, hey, what can we say? And the other one was Aladdin, who, with the video guy, was really good on that one. I will tell you that. But it was a really nice show. You know, you look forward to a few years when these kids will be doing the plays at Wacona, and this is where they're starting. The last couple of years, they've done plays, and it was really nice. You could see that they're nervous and they're scared to death, and then after the thing's over, it's like, wow, we did it, you know? So it was really good. Those were two great things. And so I think that was a good way to end in the school year and on to the summer.
Who else? Mr. Gesell.
Shout out to Wacona for announcing today that they're going to be providing Chromebooks for every student, 9 through 12, the option of 11th and 12th grade, bringing their own device if you choose. But phenomenal opportunity, those kids with the Chromebooks will get to have those Chromebooks from the beginning of their ninth grade year till their graduation, including through the summers. So I think that they take that home to them. That's pretty amazing that we finally got there.
I can just...Merrick Case sitting here, but Merrick and Steve Messina primarily have been working closely together kind of to get the logistics in place. And one of the things that's been really helpful is Merrick Case's extensive knowledge of this, that Steve's a parent at Graylock, and Graylock already has done this. So he has that firsthand perspective and is able to say, "Well, this is how this worked with my child." This is, you know, and really Graylock has been extremely willing to share their resources with us and how it worked there, so we're not recreating the wheel. And some of the challenges, they've already vetted and figured out. So I think it'll go well, and it's really helpful to have them as neighbors to support us, but also to have Steve, having got through it as a parent already.
Quick question. Is the fact the books are being issued, does that mean books will also be put on the hard drive? Thanks.
So most of them would be like online resources that they would be accessing at this point? No, not completely. No, no. No, not completely, no.
Yeah, Chromebooks don't look like that.
Yeah, I know.
The storage of Chromebooks is mostly perhaps, the data is accessed online.
One more. Go ahead, Rick. One more thing I forgot to mention before. One of our members is going to go to the NISC conference in November and no longer make it. So if there's someone else who'd like to attend, Mr. Wagner? All right. Entertained a motion to adjourn.
It's a move.
Okay, all is in favors? Aye, aye?
Aye.
Okay. These can adjourn.